Item six is the semi-annual report of the Montgomery County Planning Board. We are joined by Ms. Dunn. Ms. Dunn, you can take it away unless Chairman Reamer has any opening comments.
Let's get right into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. As the council is aware, twice a year, the Planning Department and the Parks Department come before you and they give you updates on their recent work, accomplishments, things that have been going on in both departments. And it's also a chance for the council to chat with them about what they see in their work program in the next six to 12 months. They'll be back again in the very early spring, maybe late winter, where they give you another update and it's much more related to the budget. But right now it's just to check in. With that, I believe the Planning Department is going to go first and they have a slide deck that I'm going to pull up here in one second. If I could share my screen, please.
While Pam's doing that, I just had one or two things I just needed to get out of the way, if that's okay?
Welcome, Chairman. Yes.
Yes. I'll be brief.
Hi, Mr. Gronenberg. Hi, Ms. Ernst.
It's great to see you. I think we've got a lot of great work that we've done and a lot of things in process, as you know, that you're going to hear about. The one piece of bad news that I have to share is that, as we told you last year, around budget time, some of the compensation agreements that were reached over the last year are really coming home to bite us in a way that's going to create some issues with the budget. So just in the interest of always wanting the council to be aware as quickly as possible of any unpleasant surprises and preferably avoid all surprises if we can't avoid all unpleasantness. I just wanted to share with you that a combination of the collective bargaining agreements and some of the second order consequences of those, together with some of the actuarial issues presented by the downturn in the market last year at the beginning of COVID, require us to make additional pension contributions, which are inconvenient, to say the least. And there are a couple of things that are unique to our agency that we don't need to get into in any detail right now, but I just want to give you a heads up that we expect this to be a difficult budget cycle for those reasons. And not to end on a downer, but I really, because I really do think that we're doing a lot of positive things, a lot of exciting things, and both the Parks Department and the Planning Department have had an extremely productive two years. We've been able to press forward on a lot of things and you're going to hear about reopening the Alcohol and Food in the Parks Program, thanks to some help we got from some of you in helping to get a county attorney's opinion, as well as help from the Attorney General's Office, and also a really exciting initiative with bikes for kids who can't afford them, which you're going to hear more about. So I'll close on that and turn it over to Gwen.
Thank you. And if we could pull up the presentation, we're going to just quickly go through a limited number of slides so that you will have an opportunity to ask questions. I think we're going to try to go through all of the planning slides and all of the parks slides. And if you can, hold questions till the end, we'll be able to get through the presentation quickly.
Well, Ms. Wright, thank you, Director Wright. The feedback I receive from colleagues is that in previous presentations, we did planning and then parks, and then it always felt like whoever went second didn't get as much time and didn't get as many questions. So if we could pause in the middle and allow colleagues to ask questions about planning first, that would be great. So we have enough time for parks.
Sure. It's whatever's the pleasure of the council. We want to make sure that you get all the information and that you have plenty of time for questions.
Thank you. We're big fans of both. So please start in and we'll just pause in the middle. Thank you.
Okay. Are we able to pull up the presentation?
Ye Quinn, can I share my screen?
Yes, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, I have it. Oh, maybe, hold on.
Great. That's it. And we can jump right in. If we can go to the next slide. One of the things we're particularly proud of is all of our engagement during this time of COVID. Not only for our individual projects, but we want to make sure that you understand, and you probably are experiencing this too, that we have a much, much larger participation in our planning board meetings than we ever have had. This is in a six-month period, over 74,000 views of our planning board online meeting. We also have a lot of new e-letter subscribers and we are, I want to emphasize, doing both in-person and virtual events with lots of participation. This is a recent event in Farreland as part of the kickoff of the Farreland-Bridges-Cheney Plan. Next, please. Part of our effort has really been to make our engagement even more equitable, to reach out to people who do not normally participate in the planning process. You can see a recent walk audit that took place in the Farreland area where we really reached out to a lot of different communities and who we've gotten very positive feedback about it. In the upper left corner, those of you who were tracking our street renaming project, we had an amazing, again, in-person event to rename streets that had been named for Confederate generals with names instead of people who were leaders in the historically African-American Scotland community. We are doing, again, murals, we're doing bike rides, all kinds of events to try to meet people where they are. Next, please. In the meantime, we have also been unbelievably busy on development review. In six months, we've had over 300 applications of different types. We are working hard to keep up with those applications and to make improvements to the development review process, including things like a speed-to-market initiative that some of you may have heard of, reinvigorating our development review committee, and we're working with a lot of our agency partners on that. You recently approved our subdivision regulations amendment that is going to help. And we're gathering all of our information and scanning it so that it will be more available. The building you see in this image is actually the new medical building that is the first building to proceed on the Bellward Campus in the Great Seneca Science Corridor. Next, please. And this is a click-through. So what we're really just trying to say, and Pam, you can just keep clicking. We've had an enormous number of biotech projects, which is what you see on the right. We, of course, have projects in Silver Spring and Bethesda, which you see along the bottom. But we are having projects in every part of the county. White Flint is at the north, White Oak is the upper right. And we also had a project, great senior housing project in Germantown. So we are seeing activity not only in the downtown but really throughout the county. And it's very exciting. Particularly in the biotech area, we've seen a lot of exciting projects. Next, please. We've been winning a lot of awards. I'll just go through this quickly. We've won awards not only on our wonderful Wheaton Headquarters Building, which has won quite a few awards, which are listed, but we've won awards for our Equity Focus Area Map, statewide award for our Complete Streets Design Guidelines, and a national award for the school element of the growth and infrastructure policy. Next, please. We've been working hard on Thrive Montgomery and one of the things that's been keeping us busy is working with the Fed Committee, chapter by chapter, line by line, policy by policy. We appreciate the work the council staff has done and which the Fed Committee is working on. We are going through a very, very thorough review. At the same time, we're trying to make sure that it's very clear what we're working on. If we could go to the next slide, please. We have been trying to be very, very clear that Thrive Montgomery does not change any zoning. It is a policy document. It is an overall framework for how and where we should grow in the future. And that is what is at the council right now, at the Fed Committee, and will be coming to the full council. In addition, at the planning board, at the direction of the council, we are trying to develop some good recommendations for you on attainable housing strategies. These are not before you at this point, other than the ZTA 2007, which has been paused in order to get some recommendations from planning. These recommendations may result in zoning changes, but that's going to be up to you. After you get the recommendations, consider them and decide what you would like to do. Some of these same topics are also a part of the Silver Spring Downtown and Adjacent Communities Plan, which we are also working on very hard right now. Next, please. This is just a list of the projects that we have going on right at this moment. It is an extensive list of both master plans and various studies. I'm not going to read through them all. It's really just to show you that we are very, very busy with a lot of very substantive work. Next, please. Quickly, you're going to be seeing Great Seneca Science Corridor, a public hearing, we believe, on October 19th. This is the first stage. It's really a minor master plan amendment and it involves capacity for additional biotech in the Great Seneca Science Corridor, so freeing that up from a staging perspective. We do have a more detailed amendment planned to start in a year or two, but this is sort of a first step. You're going to be seeing that in October. Next. Corridor Forward, the I-270 Transit Plan. Again, you all assigned this project to us and we have been working really, really hard. The planning board is going to be seeing a working draft at the end of this month and we hope to transmit this to you at the very end of December. Next. Silver Spring Downtown and Adjacent Communities Plan, also a very big project, which the council assigned to us. We are trying to bring the working draft to the planning board at the end of October. It is scheduled to come to you all next March. And it has a lot of really exciting and innovative ideas about how we can really invigorate Silver Springs Downtown. Next, please. Two plans that are at the staff stage of listening and visioning are Farreland and Bridges-Cheney. That's where we've done some of these really innovative outreach meetings and walk audits. And we are working to, again, listen and vision. We don't have recommendations yet, but we will be working towards that. Next. And the plan we just kicked off, which is the Tacoma Park Minor Master Plan, and it really focuses on the land that was previously the Washington Adventist Hospital, along with the Washington Adventist College, and taking a look at what the future of that site may be. Again, we're just kicking that off, visioning and listening. Next. Design Excellence Awards. Great time to celebrate the amazing design. We invite you all, October 21st, 6:00 PM. Wheaton Headquarters, we're making it a very safe event. All the attendees will show proof of vaccination. We'll have part of the event outdoors, part of the event indoors. So please, please plan on coming. There are a lot of buildings. I'm not going to reveal yet who the winners are, but a lot of buildings that some of you may be familiar with, some of you may have had a part in actually helping to see implemented, that have won awards. So I hope you'll consider attending. Next, please. The final thing is our work program, and this is the work program. The two biggest changes are that we have significantly delayed the pedestrian master plan and the rustic roads plan. Those are pushed off a bit. But you can see for Thrive, for Great Seneca, for Corridor Forward, for Silver Spring, you can see the schedule here that we have laid out. The red blocks are the most important to the council because those are the blocks showing when you may have a county council public hearing. Those are the key, the key blocks to be looking at. So that's the end for planning and I guess we can take questions if you have any.
So much, Director Wright. That was terrific. Councilman, Chairman Reamer.
Thank you. Great presentation. You went through a lot in a very brief amount of time.
Very quickly, yes.
Appreciate the incredible volume of work that it represents. And thank you. There's so much going on right now. The only problem we're going to have is trying to get it all done in a timely manner. And I think there's no question that COVID threw a wrench into our four-year plan to some extent. And so we have to really be deliberate about how to get all this done in a reasonable timeframe for the council. Because, you know, there's only, anyway, we have to figure out how to do that. Really appreciate your work on the Seneca Science Corridor Plan. Just want to highlight that for a brief second. I recall proposing that we reconsidered the staging caps a few years ago. And at the time, I was confident that we were, you know, we needed to rethink this area to support our life science sector and its future growth potential. But this was pre-pandemic. It was pre the explosion of federal investment in biotech and life sciences that we are seeing now. And so the timing has been perfect. You know, we are set to allow for more development to take place there. Kind of crazy that we ever prohibited more development from taking place there, but we are set to allow it. And hopefully, I believe it will really open the door to a lot more private investment and the continuing progress of our life sciences sector. So I want to thank the council for supporting that idea and look forward to taking it up. Wanted to just highlight for my colleagues the crunch that we're in with Silver Spring. And we'll be talking about this. We don't have to make any changes today. But I did appreciate your observation there that the way that the Silver Spring Plan will address housing, attainable housing, might be determined to some extent by how the council chooses to address it through the zoning text amendments that we'll consider. So I think that is a potentially helpful way to, you know, make sure that we're not reinventing a wheel there in Silver Spring that we've just gone through and making it harder to get that plan done. So, you know, we've got, I would really like to see us get that plan done in this winter. So I think I'm partly flagging this for our next council president that we could be on a very accelerated timeline in this winter to get a Silver Spring Plan done before the budget season has, you know, before we're too deep into budget. But if we don't, there are some logistical reasons why we may not be able to do it this term, and we don't want to see that happen. So the other comment I want to make is regarding the Corridor Forwards Plan. Very forward-thinking to have this on the agenda. You know, a lot of helpful analysis going on. You know, the governor has agreed to fund the design, the construction and the operation of a transit line for the Up County. And the council has to identify what that will be. And there are a lot of resources that you have through this plan process. And we need to come up with a partnership strategy here to work with MCDOT as well and bring our, you know, position to a conclusion. I don't know if that needs to be the same thing as the actual corridor functional master plan, because it's not a master plan per se, but it's drawing from the expertise and the modeling that you're doing through that. But I think there's some urgency with our finalizing a position there. And, you know, we might want to think about doing that ahead of the adoption of the Corridor Forward Functional Plan, which, you know, is important, but generally speaking, might be more flexibly timed than, you know, the other process we have to go to. So again, I think that that may largely be for the next council president, you know, agenda timeline, but you know, we're obviously pushing up against the end of this year pretty soon. But there's a lot to do in a brief amount of time. So if you wanted to share any comments about that, you know, we'll welcome it, but more than anything, I wanted to just highlight those issues for my colleagues and say we will need to get Thrive through the council, you know, in a considered but deliberate and quick way. You know, the Fed Committee is going in depth and we're, you know, going word by word. And I would certainly ask my colleagues if there are things that they are looking to change, you know, to let us know now if possible. But it has been a very consensus-oriented process. You know, we have been, we have asked planning to work together with council staff and, you know, the minds have been meeting along the way here. So I believe Fed is going to be sending a recommendation to the council that will have a very strong, you know, consensus foundation here. And hopefully, you know, the council will find it as satisfactory from that, from that starting point. So but as you said, or as was said, we would need to, you know, this will be for this council president. We'll have several, you know, two or three council meetings before the end of the year to finalize Thrive and and before we plow into attainable housing, which we will have already started at the Committee and then Silver Spring. So wow, you know, quite a locomotive coming through here, but that's the county council. So any comments you'd like to make? Otherwise, I'll pass it back to the council president.
Just the only thing I would say is that I want to reiterate what you said about the Thrive process. We have worked very, very hard with council staff to do literally a line-by-line, word-by-word review of the document. And they have done, I think, going to give them kudos, an excellent job of weaving in testimony that has been received from a wide variety of stakeholders to make sure that that testimony is addressed in the actual document. And so, you know, I think that the document that is coming out of the Fed Committee process is actually an even better version of the document that started out. And I'm hoping that the full council will think that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Director Wright. Chairman Reamer, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. As the local council member, in seven years on the council, I've never seen so much attention to District Five, so I'm really grateful for that. Our residents have been asking for these kind of changes for quite a while. We want to make sure we do them very well. We hear all the voices. We are very deliberative and I'm really grateful for your efforts to engage everyone. I think in East County and the Farreland community, I would guess your engagement is probably unprecedented in terms of engaging low-income residents and communities of color and and others in that area in particular, but probably anywhere in the county. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, we have been, a couple of years ago, we enacted within our department an equity agenda for planning. And we have been moving methodically to try to really make equity a bigger part of all of our work. I think Farreland is somewhat the culmination of that. And, you know, I hope it will set a standard for other plans in the future.
Yeah. Farreland definitely has a whole lot of potential and people there would like to see some changes and more amenities. What's the potential for mixed-use development in downtown Silver Spring beyond Elizabeth Square?
Well, we have an interesting situation in Silver Spring in which there is actually a lot of existing FAR, floor area ratio or density already assigned to properties. However, some of them have held back because they haven't had sufficient height. And so we are looking at changing heights, particularly at key opportunity sites. And we think there are a lot of key opportunity sites within the downtown. We want to continue to support important employers like our biotech center at United Therapeutics. We want to continue to provide housing, which is so important. But we also want to make sure that we are focusing on Silver Spring as a, you know, office and employment center and not just doing housing. We really want to incentivize and create more opportunities for employment in downtown Silver Spring. So it's an exciting plan. At the same time, we recently, our Parks Department, you're going to be hearing about this, has moved forward to acquire another urban park in downtown Silver Spring. And we're very cognizant of the need to create green infrastructure within the downtown. And we're going to be focusing on that as well.
I assume you agree with the council. We wrote a letter to the executive recently, but I assume you continue to agree with the council that the White Oak Town Center and the Viva White Oak Project generally would do a lot to both create jobs in the White Oak area and curtail the rise in crime and
Oh, my goodness, yes.
socioeconomic problems exacerbated by COVID-19 in that corridor. Do you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, White Oak has been a longstanding goal for the county. It is our opportunity to really inject some new excitement into the East County, both in the form of employment and housing. We are so excited that a very big, difficult project like this sounds like it's actually ready to launch. These are not easy projects by any stretch of the imagination. You know, and I worked in Alexandria, as many of you know. Potomac Yard took 20 years from the time it was first being discussed. Some of you may remember, they even talked about putting the football stadium there long, long ago. But you know, 20 years to sort of evolve to the point where it has now become a successful redevelopment site. These projects do not happen overnight. And I'm so excited that it looks like this vision for Viva White Oak is ready to launch. I think it will create an amazing center in the East County. It will support biotech. It will support housing where we need housing. And we're like full steam ahead. We're ready to process regulatory applications as they come in.
Absolutely. I'm really glad to hear you say that. I want to make sure there's no delays. I know, I think that's been a high priority for the council, for the council as well as the whole county. Notwithstanding the county executive's recent comments, Ms. Dunn, I think, has a comment on the schedule.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Councilmember Reamer and Director Wright's already pointed out, that the downtown Silver Spring Plan, while it is moving forward and has made a lot of progress, the way that it's currently shown on the schedule, it would be problematic for the council to find the time, given the legislative deadline of an SMA in an election year, to actually get it moved forward in that timeframe. So it's shown as coming in March. It would have a public hearing in May. But between committee and council work sessions, I don't think that the plan could get completed before the recess. And it would absolutely have to be. Again, you know, the master plan isn't just about approving the plan. We have to come back with the resolution. And then it has to go to the full commission of NCPPC for adoption. Then there has to be an SMA. And that SMA in an election year has to be approved by the end of October. Even at the first council date in September for an introduction of that SMA puts that very, very close, which means the plan has to be finished well before the end of summer, even the early part of summer. I think the plan would have to be moved forward a couple of months. If it came to the council at the end of January instead of in March, you'd have a chance of getting it done because we could try to get it through before the council gets into budget. But it's a big plan and an important plan. And if it can't, if it can't move forward and come forward, I'm not sure the council will be able to get all the pieces done that's required of a master plan before the end of their term. So I just wanted to highlight that. It is something that the council needs to consider.
Great, thank you. And if I could just ask again, I know I've had a broken record on this, but especially given all the attention to District Five, if you can make sure our office hears about everything happening, all the meetings you're holding with stakeholders in Tacoma Park and Silver Spring and in White Oak and Farreland, that would be really important because my staff is telling me they often don't hear about some of these neighborhood engagement. I think they would have, they want to be, you know, we all want to be kept apprised of all that we're hearing from our residents collectively. Councilmember Friedson.
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation. It really speaks volumes to all the incredible work that's happening in the Planning Department. And so Chair Anderson and Director Wright, I want to thank you, but I hope that you will thank the people who aren't on this call, who are doing so much of the regular work. who are doing so much of the, the regular work, Mr. Cronenberg and Ms. Stern and so many others. We've asked you to do a lot. I think we've probably asked you to do more than any planning department has ever been asked to do. We've asked you to change the way that you do your work, to do it in a more equity focused and inclusive way. We've asked you to think differently about the way that we plan and, and design things. None of these undertakings are, are easy. And so I just wanted to express my appreciation to you for, for that. And we've got a lot of successes, not just the awards that you had noted, which is a testament to your team and a real feather in your, in their cap. But the Bethesda cap, which we have to discuss and figure out how we're going to move forward. I, I want to take a moment to recognize that however we decide to, to move forward, that is a significant win for the community. There's almost no other jurisdiction, there might not be any other jurisdiction in the country that has been able to do that, that has seen the type of activity and interest and investment that we have seen based on that plan. And so, yes, there are decisions to be made. Yes, it is a challenge that we will have to figure out, bringing all the stakeholders together to determine how we move forward. But boy, is that a problem that I am excited about having to solve versus the alternative, which is a plan that nobody is interested in taking advantage of. You know, a tree falling in a forest with no one there to hear it. So that is just a significant positive. I want to make sure that we, we note that, that this is not a, a bad problem. This is a good problem. It doesn't mean that it's not a challenge that we'll have to, that, that we'll have to dive into. And I appreciate all the Thrive work and the coordination and collaboration with council staff. I know that that has taken a lot of work in addition to some of the other efforts that you are undertaking. But I really do think that that has helped, to your point, get to a better place and will continue to, to help us, you know, ultimately come to the best possible outcome as, as we get through that. And as a personal appreciation, the street renaming effort. One of my most fulfilling moments that I've ever had on the council was the hugs that I got from people who I grew up with, who old football coaches and, and others, when we officially changed out the, the street names. And to have descendants of the Dove family and, and relatives of Geneva Mason, changing those street names to these critical pillars of our community and replacing Confederate generals who attacked the county as opposed to lifted up the community. You know, is, is just a really great testament to, to, to the work that you have done, the research that your team has undertaken. And I really look forward to more of those as, as we move forward. And that was just the beginning of that project. There's a lot more work to be done there. But certainly it was a, a very positive step in, in a really important direction. And so I just wanted to thank you for that. The Corridor Forward 270 Functional Plan, this is really exciting. I really am looking forward to us taking this on, obviously generating a tremendous amount of, of interest. It's critical to our Vision Zero goals. It's critical to our north-south transportation connectivity. It's critical to our equity goals of making sure that every community in the county is connected. And it also is central to all of the ideas that we're talking about in Thrive, about the 15-minute community and complete community. That doesn't happen without that effort. And I'll just close. There are so many other things to thank you for. But in the interest of time, the Advancing the Pike District effort, I just want to thank you for all the work there. It's been really tremendous. There have been a lot of placemaking efforts that have happened. Planning has been central to so many of those, and particularly the connector. Talking about transportation, we've got tremendous positive feedback to that effort. Again, that is just the beginning of a much bigger, broader effort. But we're seeing a, a plan that has taken longer admittedly than the Bethesda Downtown Plan to be realized, but is really starting to, to take hold now finally. And planning really deserves a tremendous amount of credit for that. So thank you for all of your work. Really appreciate it. Look forward to continuing to move it forward. And I really appreciate the staff in particular for all their efforts.
Thanks. Director Wright, can I just ask, I forgot earlier. What's, I think, one of the great success stories coming out of COVID is Acorn Park and everything you've done there to program that and, and block off Newell Street and engage with thousands of South Silver Spring residents that have been lacking for a park as that whole area has grown for, you know, going back to when Councilmember Glass was the president of this South Silver Spring Civic Association and doing great work to engage people there to ask for more amenities from the county. That's been a great success story. What opportunities are there to learn from that, to make that permanent and to expand those opportunities around the county?
Well, I'm, I'm going to let my colleague Mike Riley talk about that because a lot of that work is completely a testament to the good work of parks.
I can hold on that question too.
Yeah, I think that he would be better, although I want to say we 100% believe in the idea of the shared streets and the opportunity to use streets. I'm looking out my window right now at a shared street in Wheaton. And that has made businesses able to survive and it's been great.
It's, it's germane to the whole reconfiguration of Acorn Park there and, which is under planning. But I'm happy to wait on that and hear from Director Riley. Councilmember Glass, you're on the planning queue as well.
Oh, great. Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you Chair Anderson and Director Wright and everybody else who, who's here on the Zoom and, and who's listening in from, from the mothership. Just thank you for everything that you've been doing, right? And I associate my, myself with all the comments that have been made about all the tremendous work under tremendous duress that we've all been experiencing. And, you know, I'll, I'll be brief and just, you know, I'm, I'm curious, the thinking that is, is being thought, right? I don't know. Is that the right way to phrase it? It's the afternoon. So let me rephrase this, this question. As we've been going through this pandemic and recognizing the changing environment that we are in, not only the built environment, as President Hucker just alluded to, right? With streets and parks and trying to accommodate that, but then also just real estate. And, you know, seeing what the office market is like and what it is not like. And as developers and those who, who want to create things in our community, their visions and plans might not be best suited for the economy of today or that of the next few years. And so I'm just curious how you all are engaging with, with some of these stakeholders about, you know, mixed use projects or others where the commercial might not be there, the office might not be there, and trying to adapt to whatever we think the new normal might be in the years to come.
Great question. And I did want to just mention, it's very pertinent because we've just completed a study about the future of mixed use. And we just presented that study to NAOP this morning, which is the organization that represents a lot of the larger development companies in the region. And we're looking forward to presenting the study to the council as well. I think that there's a good, lot of lessons learned from that about mixed use. I think that the key messages are we have to be flexible. We have to think about things other than retail in the ground floor of buildings, whether they be residential or office. We also had done a co-location study, and I think that's becoming more and more pertinent because we can think about co-locating various governmental uses or daycare uses or other kinds of uses in mixed use buildings instead of relying on retail. The one thing I would say is I am not pessimistic about the future of employment in Montgomery County. In fact, I'm optimistic. One of the things from that slide where we did the fly-ins of all the various projects, almost every one of the projects that I showed there, and I did this intentionally, except for one or two, were not residential projects. They were employment projects. And those are all projects that we've reviewed and approved in the last six months. They include biotech projects, both in Silver Spring and in Great Seneca Science Corridor. They include medical buildings. They include a variety of other kinds of employment uses. And our experience in Bethesda has been that the new office buildings that have been built in Bethesda have been leasing up. They have not been sitting vacant. They have been leasing up. The Wilson and the Elm, as you probably know, that building has essentially gotten fully leased with non-residential uses in the office portion of the building. So it's exciting that there is that much interest and that much of a market. I do think the way we work is going to change. I do think we're going to have to think differently. But I am not pessimistic that, you know, all is lost in terms of office and employment. I just think we may be thinking differently about it in the future.
I, I appreciate, Chair Anderson, I saw you unmuted yourself.
I was just going to say on the housing part, I think it's very clear that demand for housing of all types is back basically at pre-pandemic levels. And the idea that everybody was going to move to Montana in response to pandemic, I think, has been conclusively disproven. DC did an analysis of change of address forms and they found there was a little bit of out of the ordinary number of departures from the District of Columbia during the pandemic. But the number one ZIP code destination for people moving out of DC was 20814. So that should tell you, people are not moving to Montana. A number of them are moving to Bethesda. And I wouldn't overstate the importance of that trend, but it just shows that there is sort of an argument that maybe there's a slight change in preference for kind of an urban light, kind of a, of an environment, maybe not center city. And in the best case, in some ways, we benefit from that. Not overselling it, but I think it's very clear that rents are back to basically what they were before. Demand for all kinds of housing, high-rise multifamily, single-family houses, townhouses, you name it, is, and, and that's the problem we have to manage is just housing supply.
Well, I appreciate both your responses and, and when I first left Washington DC after graduating college, I also moved to 20814, right? So there, there's a beeline from DC right up there. But Director Wright, I, I would say that this Zoom is full of optimists and we are bullish on Montgomery County. And as you noted, we need to continue adapting and recognizing the climate that we're in and that which we will be in in the years to come. So I appreciate that, your comments. And if that presentation that you referred to this morning is available, I would love to see it, right? And some folks I've spoken with also that, that helped educate me on the question would, would be curious too. So, so I look forward to continuing this conversation. And again, thank you for, for all that you've done over the last year.
Thank you, Council Vice President Albernose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Great presentation. And I know there's way too much for us to be able to go to just in one session. Just first, I've been taking copious notes on the timing issue, noted. So I'll be following up with you, Ms. Dunn. And I saw a lot of my colleagues shaking their heads as you made those comments. And so I suspect that, that, that there will be agreement and support for making sure that we do this on a timely basis. Just, Ms. Wright, this is a 30,000-foot comment. But earlier this month, we celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month and gave an award to Proyecto Civico led by my colleague and friend, Councilmember Navarro. And you, you noted correctly, and we've seen this on the council as well, just a record number of people have come forward to testify regarding a variety of issues across the entire county. This is a really great thing. But it's confusing for even those of us on the inside, you know, depending on how the issues work. I, I think there'd be a valuable exercise for us to coordinate with you, the development of some kind of portal that, that just generally describes how all these things are connected and how they work and that it be culturally appropriate. And we've made some pretty amazing strides in Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar to explain what can be sometimes complex information around public health and Health and Human Services. And I think there's an opportunity for us to present this information to the public to let them know where they can plug in, not just here, but also the Board of Education and all of the other myriad of sister county agencies and that, that work collaboratively on all of these issues. So would love to have more conversations with you about this and maybe connect our public information offices. We've got some brilliant people that I think could come up with some pretty unique ideas. And we've also been working with some really outstanding communications firms recently that have even won Grammys. So I'd love to, to follow up with you on that, but just a general comment, but didn't want to let that observation go.
I appreciate that and we would look forward to working with council communication staff or staff in individual council offices to think about better ways to communicate. That's a very high priority.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you Director White for all your work. I, I love how it's also comprehensive and it's a really important narrative for, for the county. Just a very sort of quick and direct question regarding the retail space and the childcare space in the Wheaton, the bargaining headquarters. As you were describing some of the possibilities that exist, we actually were forethinking and making sure that we were incorporate that space. I know the pandemic obviously has affected a lot of the timelines, but it has been an issue of confusion and concern. I know my office has tried to bring together everybody to see where we are and there seems to still just not be a resolution around that. Can you just tell us very quickly how those conversations are going with the executive branch in terms of moving this forward? And, you know, because again, there are some folks who are very interested in those possibilities, small businesses, et cetera, that may want to partake. And it's part of our overarching goal around early care and education. But we have not been able to, to, to fulfill, you know, that need. Has there been progress and what's your overall take on that?
I feel there has been. Again, we have about 6,000 square feet of space set aside in the Wheaton Headquarters Building for a daycare provider. We, a couple of years ago, before we moved in, had put out an RFP but hadn't gotten any responses. We, we then convened a group of daycare providers to give us information about what would be needed to have them be interested in responding to an RFP. And the bottom line was the build out, the cost of the build out. So again, thank you to your office who helped hook us up with folks at Health and Human Services. We have identified funding both from the planning department, but also from Health and Human Services that we believe can provide up to $1 million to help with the build out of the interior space. And Health and Human Services has also committed some startup funds for operating costs for a provider. We are collecting all of that information now and putting it into a new RFP that we hope will go out this fall and that actually we hope will be much more successful, given that we've been able to identify the kinds of funding that will make the project much more doable for a daycare provider. So we have our fingers crossed that we'll get some great responses to the RFP and that we'll be able to move forward because just as the providers are anxious, I can tell you I have a whole collection of relatively young staff who have young children. And they are waiting because they would love to have a daycare facility in the building where they work. So they're all emailing me on a regular basis, wanting to know, when is that daycare center coming online? There is a, there is a built-in market for the, for the facility.
That's great news. I appreciate this update. I want all my colleagues to hear because obviously, again, this is one of those assets that we were forward-thinking in terms of incorporating it. And there were some bumps along the way, but I think pretty soon we can see their reality. And then with regards to the retail space, are you guys having any conversations with EGS? If there have been any, any progress regarding that in terms of just understanding what is going to happen here?
I don't think there has been, at least at this point. I, I haven't talked to David Dice or Greg Ossent recently, but I don't know that they've had any good nibbles at leasing that retail space. And, you know, I can definitely reach out to them because there may be some, you know, more interim uses. And, you know, I can definitely reach out to them because there may be some, you know, more interim uses. I had even suggested that maybe we should display all of the floats from the Wheaton Arts Parade in those spaces, just to give some color and interest. But I know that we need a final end retail user in that location. But I just, I don't have the most up to date. I will reach out to Mr. Dice and Mr. Assant and see what I can find out.
Thank you. Keep my office in the loop. We have had some conversations with Mr. Dice, and we were supposed to look at some possibilities, maybe even dividing the space. But we haven't gotten any updates regarding that. So let's work together and make that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Juwondo.
Thank you. And Director Wright and your team and the Planning Board, thank you for all your work. I just want to lift up, I think, I'm gonna dust off my old saying for the millions watching at home. I think we've had two big news items here today that, and I want you to restate it for the reporters that are listening. How many of commercial projects in the pipeline and that, what you just said about the why we're so optimistic about the economy here in the county? Could you restate that for me, Quinn?
Well, just that I was saying in the presentation that I showed that these are projects that have been approved over the last six months, and there are at least four major non-residential projects. Actually, probably more than that. There are at least three biotech projects in the Great Santa Rosa Science Corridor, biotech project expansion of United Therapeutics in Silver Spring, mixed-use office building in Bethesda that was shown. And we've had great success thus far in actually getting tenants for the office space that has been built. But the good news is, is that we're still seeing new projects. It's not that we're just teneting the ones that have already been approved. We're actually seeing new projects come forward, and we're seeing an enormous amount of interest in the biotech world. We are really, really excited about that and excited about the projects that we've seen. I keep trying to tout the fact that we've seen our first building on the Bellward campus. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Bellward campus, we've been literally working for 30 years since Ms. Banks sold that property to Johns Hopkins to actually get development on that property. And we have our first major medical cancer treatment facility that has just been approved from that site.
That's awesome. Right. So you've got approving them and more coming in. You've got the perfect, and just exciting on the biotech, we've been highlighting businesses every year. I've had to say, stop doing biotech and biohealth because I can't do it every week. There's so many, there's so many to do. And so just really excited to hear that and glad that things are moving in the right direction. I'm gonna come back to the office space question just in one second. But the other thing that Director Anderson said, or sorry, Chair Anderson, was about, you know, a little bit of movement from inner city to Bethesda. Now, maybe it goes away, but I've noticed that anecdotally, that trend, not just to Bethesda, to other parts of the county as well. And I think we are poised for that. I don't know if you coined that term, but you know, that urban light or whatever, you know, it sounds like, you know, my crystal light or something, just a splash, you know? But, you know, I think those are two big themes here that bode really well for us, and I'm really glad that you highlighted them, and it's thanks to a lot of the work that you've done. We'll get to Mike in a second because we gotta keep those parks up so that everyone who comes, you know, has a good time. But I wanted to highlight those two things as really a positive trend for Montgomery County and for where we're heading, and the work program built out is just amazing. And having gone line by line through Thrive, I think we're laying the groundwork for even more success. So just really, really want to thank you all for that. The one substantive question I have in addition to highlighting those two things is I remember reading an article in The Post and maybe somewhere else too, earlier in the year, about what are we gonna do with all the office space that, you know, DC's obviously having a huge issue with this. You said, Director Wright, you're being, having some success in the leasing of office space, but realizing as we're finding our way, you know, flexible schedules, whatever the new normal equilibrium is, the conversion of some office space to housing, it posited that as a, you know, there's logistical, financial, and other challenges. Are you all looking at that? Are you seeing that? Are we studying that at all? I just think that's something that I think we need to be thinking about as we see what the market does.
Absolutely. We have had a few examples of that in the county. There's a building in Silver Spring called The Octave. It was an older office building, which was essentially stripped down to its essentially to its just structure and then rebuilt as condominiums. And we are looking at other opportunities to do that. It's hard sometimes with office buildings because the floor plate is so large that there's not a lot of light in the middle of the office floor plate, and it makes it less advantageous for housing. The other thing that I'm sort of excited about looking at are other uses in old offices, including things like schools. We have had a conversation about an old Discovery Building in Silver Spring that is right near Acorn Park that, you know, could be converted to some sort of a MCPS use. I think that, again, we need to sort of have that kind of outside-the-box thinking. You know, we talk about how we don't have enough school space. There are great opportunities to do some slightly outside-the-box kinds of school spaces in older office buildings. Housing is certainly a use, but I just think that's the beginning. I think there are other kinds of uses that could be considered as well.
Absolutely. And I saw Councilmember Reamer nodding. We had gone down the road with Kid Museum and others in some sort of STEM school. I saw Councilmember Navarro and Rice, my education and culture colleagues, like nodding vigorously, childcare and education. I think the options are limitless, and it's something that maybe, you know, we should come back to more in depth. And I just mentioned to the chairs of Fed and ENC or to the full council, just I think there's a lot of potential here to explore. And I think all of us want to be supportive of those type of innovative approaches. So thank you for all your work and really excited about moving forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
You bet. Thank you. Yeah, we'd like to see, I think, any use of the Inventor Towers. Silver Spring is really counting on that. It would have been nice to see HOC moving there. That was also proposed, but it was taken off the table. So I think all of us are very supportive of any kind of innovative use of that property. Councilmember Katz.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Wright, for a really terrific presentation. My colleagues have certainly asked many of the questions and made many of the comments that I agree with. I do think that the idea that our commercial projects, and I think you said it so very, very well, that not only are they in the pipeline, but we actually are trying to get and continue to have people use those buildings for our economic development. To build it on spec, to build it, you know, and not have a tenant is not nearly as good as having a tenant. And so I sincerely appreciate that. And to the point about conversion from offices to housing, it's easier, I believe, to convert housing to offices because they have the plumbing, they have all the facilities there. To switch it the other way around becomes more difficult. But we also have to realize that we need to be thinking, as you've said, outside the box, and we need to continue to do that. I do wanna talk about, thank you for discussing the timeframe for all of this. It is important that we do this expeditiously, but it's also important that we remind our public that they will be a part of these conversations along every step of the way. And of course, we, as we sit here on a Zoom, realize that we're not doing business exactly the way we've been doing business for the last 40 years, and up until these last 18 months, two years. And we need to make certain that our public feels comfortable that they are a part of this. And just to touch on Thrive, and I know that the Fed Committee is continuing to work through it, I do believe it is necessary that we continue to not only listen to those who we agree with, but to listen to everyone who are giving their points on this. And I don't think we should in any way turn our back on any, and I'm not suggesting that we have, but I don't believe we should turn our back on anybody that is coming in with suggestions that they like it or that they don't like it. And I've seen, and I know you have as well, the information on the economics of it. And I believe if, and I haven't seen answers to that, but I believe there needs to be an extensive answer, whether what they are saying is right or wrong. I mean, whatever it is, I believe we need to have an extensive answer on what has been said because there has been much information and much misinformation. And I believe that it becomes necessary that we answer that. And the only other thing I did want to say, one of my great concerns has been that we say nothing is gonna change now. This is a long-range plan. It's gonna happen in, fill in the blank, 20 years, 30 years, whatever it is. But in order for this plan to take effect, certain things would have to be done. There'd have to be zoning changes. There would have to be certain things that are done. And I don't believe we should not, I believe we have to say that upfront. We should say we're not changing the zoning now. But what would have to happen in order for this to take place, for this plan to take place, is that there would have to be zoning changes. And then, you know, somebody, I saw it with the ICC. I've seen it with so many other things. People will say, well, don't worry about it now. It's not gonna happen for 20 years. Well, five years down the road, the same person that came in in the beginning said, I'm concerned about this. And I use the ICC every day, so I'm not picking on the ICC, not every day, but I use it quite often. But the person that came in and said, I was concerned about it five years ago, then people said, well, that's not fair. You know, we've been planning this for five years. So it puts someone in a purgatory, and that's not fair either. So I think we need to be upfront. I think we need to have the good continue, to have the good honest, open, transparent discussions so that we can get to that, to the place where we all would like to be, which is a better place in Montgomery County. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Rice.
Thank you very much. You know, a lot's already been said. I just want to double down on a couple of things because I think it's incredibly important. We're talking about childcare space, and thank you, Councilmember Navarro. You know, it's a part of our Kerwin Blue Player. And so it's a goal of ours in public policy now statewide for us to make sure that we're really enhancing the opportunities that we're providing to constituents throughout the state. And so, of course, here in Montgomery County, we're gonna have to continue to do that. And so utilizing that space in a creative manner is incredibly important. And so I know that you guys have continued to do that, and we'll double down on that now, and that's really exciting. I did just want to acknowledge some of the great things that we see happening in the Up County that continue to be responsive to what we're seeing in terms of trends. I really want to appreciate the Planning Department understanding what's happening and what we're seeing. You know, when it comes to Milestone, Senior Germantown, and the great work that's going on there, that's absolutely phenomenal. More importantly, the one thing that I did want to highlight just very quickly is that when it comes to the unique use of space for housing, we also have to look at our homeless population and what it is that we're doing there. We just had a meeting where we were talking about additional folks being housed. Chair Alvaro and Councilmember Glass and I were in this meeting talking about some of our victims of trafficking who are now going to be housed. And so it really is imperative for us to think about all these different kinds of ways we can achieve all of our goals at the same time and incorporate them all together. And so it's that sort of forward-thinking that I think is gonna help us as we continue to progress. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it and look forward to the continued success.
Thank you.
Agreed. Yeah, Councilmember Rice and I have been very involved in the trafficking issue for years. And other counties, not just in our region in Maryland, have been more innovative than I think we have at creating housing for our victims, survivors of trafficking. And I would really like to see, would like to ask for your help in creating some solutions that are more responsive to their needs. Councilmember Reamer.
Thank you. Just wanted to thank Ms. Wright for highlighting the exciting opportunity for a high school in that former Discovery Annex. You know, there is some real opportunity in this plan to address some of the needs of a property owner there to actually make it possible. And in combination with the park that they are proposing, the parks that proposing to buy next door, you know, it is really something that can happen. And it could happen on the sooner or it could happen later. And Mr. Rice and I have had some terrific conversations with the property owner there. And we can confer whether it's something that's ready for a, you know, a joint committee meeting or not. But I'm thrilled to hear that planning is factoring that into its thinking, and I think there's just tremendous potential there. So thank you so much. All right.
Thank you. Thanks, colleagues. Thanks, Director Wright and Mr. Chairman. Director Riley, we're over time. We're in love with the Parks Department. Can you do your presentation quickly and then we'll move on? Try to catch up.
Absolutely. I designed it to be very quick.
Thank you.
So Pam's pulling up the slides. I'm really pleased to report to you today from my brand-new office in the Wheaton Headquarters. Thank you very much. If I look to the north, I'm looking at Sugarloaf Mountain. If I look to the west, I'm looking at the Safeway Building.
The beautiful headquarters, for sure.
So I'm starting out with Dry Green Story Hour at Brookside Gardens. This is the latest in our evolution of creative programs to appeal to all residents of the county. It's offered once a month on Saturday mornings, and our three-month attendance for July through September, that three-month period, was 347 attendees showing the appeal of programs like this. The next session is Saturday, October 23 at 10:00 AM, for those of you who might want to join in. Next. I hope you've all been to the Henson Museum. We're really, really proud to be telling the story. We had two big celebrations in September. The state proclaimed the month of September as International Underground Railroad Month, while highlighting both our own Henson Museum and the one in Canada. And then subsequently, we celebrated a community day and invited all members of our community to experience this incredible new destination in Montgomery County. Next. So as you know, we've been focusing on prioritizing parkland acquisitions within areas of higher-growing population density over the last several years. We've acquired newer parks in Wheaton, Bethesda, and the latest being this one-acre parcel on East West Highway and South Silver Spring, right across from the Landmark Denizens Brewing Company. We're very excited to bring more activating park amenities and programs to this area. Next. Next slide, Pam. So this project was referenced. I agree. It's been very impactful. We have a new lingo in the Parks Department called a mini refresher. And it's about doing more quick, low-cost, but highly impactful improvements to make parks more active and social. At Acorn, we partnered with McDop to activate the closed section of Newell Street with street painting, colorful picnic tables, benches, and platters, and a variety of games. And I'm so pleased to hear you acknowledge how impactful these types of improvements can be to make an area more active and appealing to the community to use. Next. Very similarly, at Flower Ave nearby, we transformed an existing border wall into comfortable seating, added colorful patterns to the walkways, upgraded the lighting, and added games and other amenities, and this has had a similar, very positive impact. Again, quick, relatively low-cost, and impactful changes. Next. So this graphic shows major capital projects completed or delivered since fall 2020 through spring 2022. We've remained highly productive during the pandemic and hope this chart and this presentation confirms that. I won't mention each project except to thank the entire Fed Committee for helping us celebrate the ribbon-cutting of the magnificent new cupboard arena at Meadowbrook Stables. Compliments to our partners at the Meadowbrook Foundation. And I'm also very excited that And I'm also very excited uh that the construction of Jean Lunt's Urban Park uh in Silver Spring is finally underway uh in our partnership with the Department of General Services. Next. So as you can see, we've been very aggressive with grant applications for needed park projects in anticipation of uh available federal, federal funding. We scoured the programs and applied for over twenty uh needed major park projects that we deemed good candidates. We don't know how successful we'll be, but we're always looking for ways to support our parks beyond the county's tax-supported funding, and hopefully we'll have some success with some of these grants. Next. This project was also referenced uh that uh we have a new program that we just kicked off called Roots to Rocks. It's a new program to reduce barriers to mountain biking for underserved communities and children. We've acquired a bike fleet and a trailer to bring bikes to events. We had thirty participants at our inaugural event, and I will report back on the expansion of this expansion of this program uh next spring, but I do want to thank particularly Councilmember Wright for his support in our initiation of this program. Next. On uh natural surface trails, we recently uh passed the threshold of two hundred miles sanctioned to sustainable natural surface trail trails across the county last year. Most recently, we were pleased to add more than seven miles in the east county and the upper Paint Branch watershed. Next. Moving on to hard surface trails, uh we renovated one, a one-mile section of the Long Branch Trail from Doma Avenue to Long Branch Parkway, including the replacement of old bridges. The work's going to be completed in the spring of next year. Uh, our major progress on trails will not be possible without County Council's support of our level of effort projects and the C I P. And here I do want to thank all of you, but particularly Parks Lead, Councilmember Andrew Friedson, for his constant support of both our capital and operating budgets to do work like this. Next. Many of you were here. Uh, this was our first renovation of a field located at a county recreation center with the renovation of the High Demand Field at White Oak Recreation Center. As you know, we maintain many of the uh the school fields, but this was our first foray into the county government fields. I hope you agree that the before and after conditions speak to the success of this work, and I want to thank Councilmember Juando in particular for championing this effort. Next. Uh, if you recall, Parks began renovation of M C P S Elementary and Middle Schools back in nineteen ninety-eight. We still have not completed them all. Here's a picture of our initial renovation of Oakview uh Elementary School in Silver Spring that we completed this summer. Uh, now the kids get to play on Bermuda grass instead of dirt and rocks, thanks to funding that you provide the Parks Department. And I do want to thank, in this case, Councilmember Reamer in particular, for his longstanding support of our efforts to improve over seven hundred fields at uh both park and school sites. And I just do want to add, we're not done with the M C P S fields, even though we started back around the year two thousand. We are just completing our last group that have never been renovated and taken into our maintenance contract. Next. So our parks are very safe, as evidenced by crime statistics, but Chief McSwain and his team remain vigilant and proactive, focusing on park patron safety. He heads a committee that focuses on evolving technology like remote cameras, Septed, trail safety and hotspots. And I'd be happy to come back and elaborate to the Public Safety Committee if you'd like to know more about this initiative. Next. The Parks Department services the county's lead agency for deer management, safety and cost effectiveness sit at the top of our goals. Our wildlife experts evaluate and evolve the program each year to add management areas and determine the most cost-effective and safe approach. As this program remains somewhat controversial, you will occasionally hear concerns and complaints from your constituents, but we, well, we will always uh reply to concerns and try to explain why we're doing what we're doing. There will always be cases where you hear from constituents who do not agree with our, our program. Next. Providing access has been a, a priority. Uh, accomplishments over the last year, we've employed uh six interns with intellectual and physical development disabilities through our project search and employed one of them with permanent employment. Uh, we've created a walking club for residents sitting in better called Montgomery Explorer. Since April, a hundred and eighty participants have walked seven thousand four hundred and fifty miles. We've installed two communication boards, one at Wheaton Regional, one at Wheaton Local Park and one at South Germantown uh Regional Park, and we've provided our police uh department with sensory bags that can be used to connect with a distressed individual who may have mental health issues to deescalate a stressful situation. Next. Uh, the Fed Committee is in knee deep in Thrive, but a level down related to Parks. We're updating our uh Pro's Plan. Uh, I'll have the pleasure of speaking with you about the Parks Section of Thrive uh fairly shortly, or at least the Fed Committee, where I'll talk a little bit about the Pro's priorities. Uh, but I will just say that you'll hear a lot of similar and constant goals that are focusing on the themes of active, urban and social. Next. You talked about community engagement. We've had a very robust community engagement component of the Pro's Plan that we're just uh completing. We've done both mailed and intercept surveys at targeted locations throughout the county. I'm pleased to say we've had over sixteen hundred respondents. And the respondents track very closely with Montgomery County's racial and ethnic demographics, which shows success about reaching our community, and I will report back on the specific Pro's uh recommendations in the spring report. Next. So as you know, we operate many of our facilities through an enterprise fund that pays for operating costs and staffing and also capital improvements to renovate aging facilities or add uh new facilities. While we had significant revenue losses during the pandemic, I'm proud of my staff for proactively managing the fund to limit losses and actually increase revenue in some of the programs. The three facilities you see here, the campground, the driving range, and the boats actually have revenue increases ranging from twenty to thirty percent a year. And although we had losses in other areas, I'm happy to report that the fund revenues are stabilizing and the fund overall is in very good health. Next. We continue to seek partners in the business, nonprofit and public sector to partner with us on new creative events that bring our diverse community together in our parks. We're having a lot of success. Here's just a few of some impressive numbers. Over two thousand attended the Friendship Picnic in Wheaton Regional Park. Four hundred attended one show of the uh Brookside Concert Series. We had a hundred and fifty uh at Opera in the Park in Kensington. And speaking of bringing people into our parks, I'm pleased to say we are going to be resuming the allowance of alcohol in the picnic in the park program thanks to a favorable attorney opinion of the county attorney sought by Councilmember Glass. So thank you, Councilmember Glass, and I will be releasing specifics on the resumption of that program very soon. Next. And we are winding down. Community gardens, we'll continue to have wait lists at all twelve of our community gardens. We're working hard to add more locations and have two new gardens in the works. Uh, we are working with the nonprofit Harvest Share, and I'm pleased to report we donated two thousand two hundred and fifty pounds of excess food this year, uh including leafy greens, tomatoes, eggplants, peppers and much more. Next. So I know parents have been desperate to find activities for the little ones during the pandemic. I'm pleased to report we hosted ninety-one camps and hosted over twenty-two hundred kids this summer. Many of the classes or camps filled up in a matter of hours. Next, on the awards front, I won't repeat the awards about Wheaton and the headquarters. It's great that we have so many people who can take credit for that great project, including all of you, and I think it's appropriate and good that we all step up and celebrate our, our victories. Um, also depicted here uh for Josiah, Josiah Henson Museum, we won an awards from the American Institutes of Architect and uh Preservation Maryland. And for the restoration of the Seneca Store and the neighboring Upton Darby House, we also received uh awards from Montgomery Preservation. So congratulations to my talented staff for delivering such excellent and meaningful projects. And wrapping it up, in the spirit of Lester Holt, I thought I would end with a feel-good story. Our arborists were scheduled to cut down a dead tree on our property that was a hazard to a nearby home. Project came to an abrupt halt when they discovered a red-tailed hawk nest about sixty foot up in the tree. They called in our wildlife apologist to work with state and federal officials to rescue the two two-week-old chicks. They built a platform in a nearby tree, transferred the nest and chicks. The parents came back to the new nest and the chicks were raised and fledged. So with that, uh, I think there's good things happening in the parks. I will rest my case on that one, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anything happening? Councilmember Friedson.
Thank you so much. I will be brief and just offer my deep appreciation and thanks. Obviously, the parks have shown their true colors during this pandemic. So many residents have leaned on them. The usage is through the roof and uh the pictures speak for themselves. I think that the picture of the ball field in particular showing the before and the after just shows uh the remarkable work that your uh team does. I note the Josiah Henson Museum, which is really a gem, I think in the region, maybe even in the country, for uh historical uh living museums, which that really is a living museum. Really proud to have that in, in District One and uh to be able to have uh visited it. Um, but uh just wanted to, to, you know, all this work that you've been doing, all these efforts, just ask one specific question related to your, your staffing. And if you could just uh, you know, talk about your staffing here in Montgomery County on, on, on this side of the M N C P P C versus Prince George's County and, and how those compare. Uh, and uh, you know, how you feel like you're able to keep up with uh the growing demands that our park system uh has that you've just so eloquently noted.
Well, thank you for that, that question. Um, you know, historically, my colleagues on the Prince George's side, who the uh director over there is now my good friend Bill Tyler, who worked here for years. They have a different tax structure, so resources are not as much of a challenge for them. Um, and they're, I, I think they would agree that compared to the Montgomery Park side, they are relatively well-funded. The only way I have kept my head above water, uh, since I have been both deputy director and director, which is fifteen years, is through the reconciliation process. Where at the end of the budget process, you manage to come up with some limited amount of funding to occasionally add some resources to the uh Parks Department. Um, where, where, how do I feel about how I, I have fared? We have many programs where I, we are not meeting our maintenance standards or our performance standards. Where staffing is the solution that I've been able, unable, right, unable to grow the staff. And then, as I hope I've shown over the years, when you do give me new staff to support an initiative or a program, I believe we regularly deliver and can prove, and can, can prove that throughout these uh presentations. So I, I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Something that I think we ought to take a look at in terms of uh comparisons. Proud of the work that the Fed Committee and the Council has done to provide you with some of those resources, but also recognize that, you know, it's been on the margins, you know, toward, towards the end and uh this, you know, these past two years, you've, you know, really shown uh, you know, how your staff with limited resources can really step up, and it's really demonstrated that the park system in Montgomery County is part of our transportation infrastructure. It's not a a luxury. It's really a necessity as part of our health and, and well-being and, and a core part of the quality of life of why people want to move here. I would note those people moving from D C uh to two oh eight one four uh to be my neighbor, I will note, uh, you know, part of the reason why they're moving here is because they want access to parks and to green space and to the quality of life that you and your team are so central to providing. So thank you for that. Thank you for all of your efforts. Thank you for a succinct presentation which tried to put into uh a short period of time you know, all the incredible work that your team does and look forward to this council continuing its commitment to provide you with the resources that you need for your team to do the great work that you do. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice.
Be very quick. So thank you, thank you, thank you for being a champion for equity. Uh, for doing exactly what we talked about when it comes to, and I saw the kids. Uh, I know what it's like to be out there on those trails. I was there with uh Mr. Anderson. It is amazing, and you're going to open their eyes to so much, so I can't thank you enough. So I want to push you to do one more. Uh, and that's always the case in doing well and doing great things. Uh, and this will be in conjunction with our Recreation Department, but certainly sixty-four percent of black children can't swim. Um, and that's a problem. And so I think in working in conjunction with our Recreation Department and Parks, uh, who has a lot of our pools, we can tackle this. We have a person, Carrie Shaw, who's a professor at Montgomery College, who's volunteered to help work with you guys, so I'm going to forward the information, but I'd love to challenge you again just if you've done and been successful at this great program to do yet another that says that we truly are about equity when it comes to all of our amenities. Look forward to working with you and just again, want to say thank you.
Thank you.
At second motion, Council Vice President Albernose.
Well, I just did want to mention that since the subject came up, Craig Rice has been talking smack about riding a mountain bike with him for years, and he did go out and he does know how to handle a bicycle. So just wanted to get that on the record.
Thank you. Council Vice President Albernose.
Thanks. Uh, there are certainly great things going on, Mike. Thank you so much for you and your team's leadership. Um, we've been fortunate. We haven't had as much rain during this fall season as we've had in previous years. Um, but by virtue of climate change and some of the flooding incidences that we've had, I know a number of sports associations have observed over the last few years that, you know, we've lost time on fields because of that rain, and you guys are stuck between a rock and a hard place on that issue. Um, but I do think in the future, and I'll follow up with your office on this, uh, as we do a phenomenal job of converting these fields, the downside is we have to be cautious in the manner in which we use them because they can go south very quickly if after a big rainstorm uh kids that are, you know, or, or anyone that goes on that's unpermitted, uh, if we can take several steps backwards. So would love to talk to you about a, as we, as we transition in these fields, uh, how do we sustain them, uh, given those challenges that are unique to our region with the varying climates? Um, so that, you know, we don't go back to some of those images that you had before uh and the millions of dollars we're investing on them in the front end. So I'll, I'll uh follow up with you on that because we don't have time to talk about that at great length right now. Um, but commend you and your team for all those conversions.
Okay, thanks. I think, I think that's it. Um, thanks to all of you for this great presentation. Thanks personally for all your attention to White Oak and Flower Avenue Park and Acorn Park. Really appreciate it. Uh, there's much more to do, but we're really happy to uh, anyway, work can, in, in collaboration with you to get all this done. So uh, keep up the good work. Thank you so much.